Ladies and gentlemen, we've got a call meeting in order and entertain a motion to enter executive session.
Subway.
Any discussion? I'm favoring going into executive session, state of mind.
Aye.
All votes stated by state of mind. Okay, we're now in executive session. Can I entertain a motion to come into executive session?
Thank you.
Executive session, any discussion? All voters coming out of the executive session, state of mind.
Aye.
All votes stated by state of mind. Okay, now we need to certify the executive session. So whereas the Tassau Town Council convened an executive session on this day pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia 30th Amendment Act, and whereas 2.1 that's 344.1 of the Code of Virginia requires certification by the council that such executive session was conducted and informed due to Virginia law, shall therefore be resolved, the Tassau Town Council hereby certifies, that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters promptly exempted from open media requirements by Virginia laws were discussed in the executive session to which the certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the executive session were heard, discussed, or considered by the Tassau Town Council. So I need a roll call vote to certify. Uh, council member Catherine.
Aye.
Council member Davis.
Aye.
Council member Fox.
Aye.
Council member Beasley.
Aye.
Council member Hankins.
Aye.
Council member Flynn.
Aye.
Okay, so we're now out of the executive session. Alright ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming out. Uh, we're gonna start a regular town council meeting. If you'd please stand for the plate with allegiance and indication.
Let me just certify the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's it, but you please look to the record.
Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you so much that we can gather this mighty freely and conduct business and be a part of the workings of our local government. Cast the spirit of unity across this room. That decision made might be best for all. And just thanking Him for the privilege He has. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
The first on their agenda is a special presentation and request. Uh, speaking Southwest Virginia Representative, Brittany Gilbert. Could you please come up?
How are you doing?
Good, how are you?
I'm good.
You good.
Oh, I can't say you before I say whatever.
Absolutely.
So I work for speaking Southwest Virginia. I'm the local marketplace coordinator. Back here with our assistant, Jocelyn, and our American coordinator, Andrea. We have a, what we call grocery store on wheels. We go into communities where there's a lack of brick and mortar grocery stores or maybe food insecurity, low income, and try to get groceries to people who might otherwise not be able to have access to it. We do offer a refresh match program, which when people shop using maybe Hickers Match, they get 50% off fresh and frozen produce if there's some additives in it. We do have a site in Tassel at Mount Olivet Church on Berks Garden Road. It's the second Tuesday of every month, or second Monday of every month from June 12.
That's it? So are you looking to like?
We can, Sam. We're always open to pop-ups and feel like the community and see how things go about in some communities. We do better than others. We always do dinner when we have the support of the community behind us.
Right, so would you look to potentially have a spot like here in the town of Tassel where you could come and set up?
Yes.
And would you be asking for like a location where you could do it weekly, monthly, or?
Yes, so the way we do our sites now, we go once a month to all of our sites for two hours.
Okay.
So how busy are you at that site right now?
So we just had our first set up there last month and we serve close to 30 people.
That was your first time?
Yes, that was our first time. Uh, the pastor congregation at church were amazing and going out to the shut-ins, people that they knew couldn't get out and taking our shopping list. We have a shopping list that we bring, have everything that we carry on our truck with all the prices and going out to people that they knew couldn't get to us and helping them fill the shopping list out and picking their groceries up and taking them to work.
Do you need utilities?
I'm sorry, what?
Do you need utilities?
No.
Are, tell me about the truck.
No, we have a hotspot, so we're able to use our hotspot. We have our little clever registered device. Our only thing is we're not allowed to pay cash or checks for our personal safety or we can do credit cards, debit cards, any of these.
So Leanne, this has for a vote on it. Uh, I'm trying to, trying to understand what we're, what we're voting on. So if we can open up the town of Tassel, maybe help you look for a spot?
Okay.
To, to, to do this, or?
How soon do you hope to be set up at a location?
I probably haven't done it within two weeks. I have to look at our calendar and see what days we have open. We generally don't go out on Fridays. We're trying to use that day to inventory and resell and make sure we have everything ready to go open the next week. So right now I know that we have the fourth Monday open.
So would it be okay to have a vote to give Leanne the authority to work with, speaking Southwest Virginia, to find a location and then work with them on a date to come and come into town and advertise that they'll be here and things like that? I like that one. Second. Alright, any discussion? Okay, all favor giving Leanne power to work with, speaking Southwest Virginia, to determine a location and time where they can provide their services to our community, state of mind. All votes stated by state of mind. There you go.
Hey, may you be in touch and we will set the final.
Perfect, perfect.
So next on the agenda is the Tassau County Tribe and sponsorship request. Interim manager, Ray.
So Tassau County Tribe, this is a program that provides support and education about crime prevention to senior citizens in Tassau County. Um, it's compiled of several different entities. Um, the Tassau County Sheriff's Office, the Lynch Valley Community Action, Tassau County Home Office Attorney, Appalachian Agency for Senior Citizens. Um, so last year, we actually did sponsor a hole on their golf tournament. It was a hundred dollar sponsorship and they are asking for support yet.
We have a motion to sponsor a hole to golf tournament?
Uh, a second.
Any discussion? Mr. Mayor?
It's, um, it's for Senior Safety Day. They do a golf tournament to raise funds for Senior Safety Day. So that's what we would be. It's for the seniors day. Do you always like to support the seniors?
That's right, I like to support senior citizens. I'll do anything for the senior citizens. It's hard work, you down?
It says that it is, they also provide resources to the assisted living facilities to help residents with the training costs.
So we have a second, any other discussion?
I mean, I would like to recuse myself while I was on that board for training.
So, uh, all in favor of providing a hundred dollars for golf hole sponsorship, state of mind? All votes stated by state of mind? Okay, motion carries. So next on the agenda, Tassau County's swim team request, Jim Thomas?
He's not here. Uh, he's my brother, I know he does it every year.
So Mr. Thomas had called and spoke to Susan about being put on the agenda. Um, he is with the Tassau Torpion Swim Team and there is a piece of their equipment that has broke. So they were gonna come to you and ask for a donation and support to repair their machine. I'm very sorry you did not give us any information of what machine, how much it is, um, if you all would like to table it and I'll get more information and maybe find out why.
So, uh, next on the agenda is the local business recognition. Unfortunately, Mr. Repass's health has prevented him from being here today, but his business is about to turn 100 years old. And that is amazing that we've had a business here that was almost in operation for 100 years until the failing health and everything. So what we did is, we have created a, you know, a recognition certificate to give Mr. Repass and Susan had talked to him about coming and, you know, being part of this, but he just couldn't make it to see it. But we just wanted to publicly recognize, you know, the business and, you know, the Repass family, how many years they've been into the town of Tassel. So if you guys want to see this.
Even if he's not here, I think he deserves a round of applause.
Oh, absolutely. We'll get this delivered to him?
Yes.
He's got two of the brothers there. With the mayor's three, I haven't met this.
So next on the agenda is the approval of amendments for council meeting on May 14th, 2024. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Say.
Any discussion? All in favor of approval of amendments for council meeting on May 14th, 2024, state of mind?
Aye.
All votes stated by state of mind? Okay, motion carries. Next is the approval of the financial statements and financial report for May 2024. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Subway.
One second?
Say.
Go ahead.
Alright, any discussion? All in favor of approval of the financial statements and financial report for May 2024, state of mind?
Aye.
All votes stated by state of mind? Motion carries. So next is our committee and conference updates. First is our planning commission committee, council member Davis.
Um, unfortunately, I was out of town for a meeting last night, so I was going to leave it to Mr. Hurley to give us the updates.
We just did some recaps last night of the meeting. Had the update from Chris Wermuth on the Tassau Community Foundation. Unfortunately, the engineers have pushed the timeline back to December this year. Just sorry. Second thing was a demo that I brought for them. It's at 1291 Riverside Drive. It's the old Danny Wells house.
Easy enough.
He used to own it years ago, let's try to get that.
I was never a resident.
No. But I bring it forward as planning question probably to y'all before. Ramel Hardbrake wants to buy, so if he don't, we'll just proceed with it. But he wants to buy the land and the house. But I think his intention is to narrow it down too.
Does he own the house that he's in?
I've been asking that.
He doesn't. He rents from Mr. Repass.
Oh, okay. Alright, maybe he wants to buy and do something with it, I don't know. There was also the discussion about the solar, the big solar farm that wanted to go in, let's develop it. It's something we'll probably have to address later that. They haven't actually done an application yet, but I was hoping he could manage it as of now.
Right. That it?
Yep.
Alright, well, thank you. Be interesting to hear about the whole solar thing since we just made the changes to code for the zoning for that. So, uh, next, Industrial Economic Development Authority. Chairperson, Carrie Plaid, just go give us an update.
Hello, everyone. You guys had a good month since we last saw you. Uh, we met last night and here are a couple of updates from our meeting. First, Bowling Alley Demo is scheduled for this week, which is amazing. Um, we're really pleased to have saved the month of the town some money on this project and we're really appreciative to Chris and Leanne for their ongoing support and especially, I'm thankful because they hold my hand and tell me what to do. So really thankful for them. Um, we have ongoing planning meetings with our dialogue and design team for further development of the farmer's market that we hope to develop that side into. I think today we received our case two site assessment from San Tech and the summary that was important to me was that it looks like it's in good shape for being redeveloped for commercial use, which is what we need. Um, last night we also discussed the meal tax incentive that you all asked us to explore last month. Um, Leanne had found in our code some sort of meal tax incentive, but Brad educated us last night that what's currently in the code is under the Virginia Enterprise Zone and so we are unsure if we're able to edit that code. Um, it might be something that's mandated by the state. So one of the things that we voted on were to ask you all to explore whether that element of code is something that could be amended or edited. We were specifically hung up on the criteria that a business would have to create five full-time jobs. Uh, one of our committee members looked up on the website that it has to be, um, jobs that provide insurance and so we know that for small businesses, that's a big ask. Um, so again, that might not be something that we can do. Brad was unsure, so it's worth an explore. But then we also, in the same kind of motion, asked if we're not able to, and you all are still interested in this type of incentive, to please grant us the ability to create as part of our EBAG program for new businesses. We're interested in kind of the framework that already exists under the VEZ, but we would again want to maybe work with that condition of the five full-time job criteria that stipulation. Um, so Brad, did I say anything else? Okay.
Question about that. They, do the other EVAG benefits, do they follow the Virginia Enterprise Zone?
No.
Stickler's? They do not, okay.
There was a bit of conversation and Brad helped me on this one.
Good.
For the IDA's charter and putting this, there's a connection there to the IDA charter. Uh, not to the charter, it's a funding agreement. The Entrepreneurial Business Attraction Grant and National Business Attraction Grant Program was implemented back in 16. That was done in cooperation between the council and the IDA with a funding agreement from the town dealing with the EVAGs and E-Pole, uh, personal property tax, or FAFD, those types of things that the town and IDA can work together in terms of making that happen with the applications of whatever businesses came into town, came into the community and attended the IDA for consideration. So it wasn't in regard to charters, it was a funding agreement that was specifically set out basically between both entities back in 2016.
And you're saying that that's essentially where it gives them the authority to actually give the grant back?
Basically, yes.
Right. Given the fact that most restaurants that are going to be started are going to be small, they're, you're very correct in saying that unlikely that they're going to be able to create, uh, job, full-time jobs that provide insurance and all that with that heavy of a cost. What do you suggest we do there, Brad? Uh, I mean, do, do we need to make, what kind of motion do we need to make to allow this to happen?
Right now, at least as far as the Entrepreneurial Business Attraction Grant's been used, utilized by the IDA since its implementation, meal tax has not been a consideration. It's not been one of the criteria for which, uh, the grant has been allowed. Because one of the reasons, again, with the VEZ that was in place, also put in play in 2016, Virginia Enterprise Zone had specific criteria through a state statute with the county. The county was critical in that in terms of implementing the VEZ to apply both to town and county for purposes of meal tax and purposes of transient occupancy tax. So they're in place, but it's one where they were sort of parallel with one another with the VEZ having much more stringent criteria. So what you would end up having to do is if one, going back and seeing it's a VEZ ordinance, which it is an ordinance, can be amended and still stay within state guidelines for that, for being, dealing with Virginia Enterprise Zone. Or going back with the policy you have with the grant program, which is strictly with regard to the IDA, it's not an ordinance, not a resolution. It's really, it's a grant program that the town gave its blessing to for the IDA to work, to do, uh, for possible, you know, businesses to come in for, whatever it might be. Restaurant, clothing store, some brick and mortar, you know, whatever it might be. So you have to go in and basically work with the IDA to see if that's something that the council wants to do because it does affect your budget.
We would be interested in, you know, standardizing process where this is something that's achievable or accessible for all, like towards an equal opportunity for future business owners. Like I said, we liked the scalable part of the top of the code. I think Leanne sent it to you in an email. So we would not be, I'm speaking just for care of, we're not interested in reinventing the wheel, um, but if that's something you all would like to see as part of our EBAG program, then.
I think it definitely had good buttons. Again, kind of a good foundation to start from. Especially if you don't want to reinvent.
Well, the VEZ, the difference between what's in place with the Entrepreneurial Business Attraction Grant and the VEZ specifically with regard to meal tax, the VEZ had a graduated scale that was in place. And it was only good for three years, EVAG was good for four. Uh, the VEZ gave like an 80% first year, 60% second year, 40% or 20% third year, and then it cut off. So that at least was in place. But it's never been tested, at least since I've been serving as council for the town, that I've ever had any dealings with. That the EVAG, the Entrepreneurial Business Attraction Grant, yes, would deal with that on many occasions since it was implemented back in 16.
So let me ask this, just for clarity. There's two different routes we could go. We could either ask to amend the Virginia Enterprise Zone.
The ordinance.
Ordinance, or we can give the IDA the authority to extend the EVAG funding agreement to a meal tax course with slash training.
That would be something I think you'd need to investigate and research and see how it's going to affect you.
Okay.
It was, that was considered, this is my history deal with the former manager. And initially there were five or six criteria and two of them were removed, which was transient and transient occupancy and meal tax for the reasons of the potential effect that we had without any further research on what we would do for the budget. And also in regard to the existence of the VEZ ordinance. So it's one where I think it's definitely something you need to look into. I would recommend that you do, but it's not something I would recommend you jump into immediately either. I think you need to do at least 30 to 60 days of research to see what it's going to affect with your manager and the budget, how it's going to affect you. And maybe it has to be that big of an effect, I don't know. I think you need to have it to document, make sure that's, that's the case.
And how the code in place allows us to do this.
Under the VEZ?
Yeah.
Yes, Virginia Enterprise Zone, that's correct. You have a specific ordinance within your code that was adopted. Literally, it was a pre-structured ordinance that the county adopted as well as the town. And there was a map, a specific map that was drawn to show specific areas within the town that fit within the VEZ. For Main Street being one of them, uh, parts of North Tassel around the old, with the Grant Shopping Center area and a few other places. There weren't that many, but there were definitely, I think, we had five or six, I believe. Small pockets were running out of which Main Street was one.
But EBAG is townwide.
That's correct. That's the difference between the two. Well, it's, it's one major difference between the two.
Yeah, to me, that would be the preferred route to allow the IDA to, I think, look through the EBAG. That way we would have consistency with our grant programs and, uh, you know, give them the authority to manage all of that. That would be my preferred route, but, um, I do agree we need to examine exactly how it's going to affect budget. But, uh, I mean, I don't know what the next course of action is.
So who does the investigation case?
Right, sitting in the corner right there.
Is this one of those things based on, because we know that there's an element of some urgency, uh, for, for business, prospective business, for getting that done. Is this something that you, maybe we can create a team to help us, Leanne, out?
I'd be willing to do that, yes. I don't know, I think that's a good idea.
Subcommittee, Leanne appreciates it.
Not with the year in the country, guys.
Yeah, about that, man, we're good.
As long as it's two.
Yeah, two or three.
Yeah, that does me too, I would recommend to you.
Yeah, so in my ear. I would volunteer to do that, yes.
Okay, I'll go with. Certainly, certainly. I mean, because what we're saying is if this gets put into a townwide grant and you've got other businesses that potentially access it, we gotta do hard number crunching to figure out what it's going to, what impact it could potentially have to the town budget. And you've got your hands full with a whole other thing, so. We have a good idea.
Thank you very much. There, yeah, I'm looking at the Enterprise Zone and it's kind of, it looks like it's put in to go around what maybe businesses were around at that time. Because there's different things cut out of Main Street, so.
If I remember correctly, it's strictly for general business. It wasn't for neighborhood businesses, but that may or may not be accurate.
Yeah, I don't, I just clicked on the agenda on the.
It was strictly not in concert with the county when it was implemented. We were approached by that, at that time, one of the county supervisors and also the economic development director at the time, which is what my notes, my memory's not that clear, but my notes reminded me that was clear and how that came about eight years ago. Your subcommittee was just formed.
Yeah, good job.
Thank you for that, man, I knew you guys were.
Do you have any other items that came from that meeting that you think would be useful in the exploration? Send them our way.
Okay.
Uh, last one, update on our adventure with the Rany Lot. We're moving forward with communicating with four different local realtors to discuss listing and terms of sale for the property. Um, we would be interested in making sure that there's an agreement between council and the IDA for us, if the property sells, for us to return the initial investment to you all and then the IDA retain the remainder of the profit in order to establish a budget so that we could work on different economic development projects. I'll be happy to.
Thanks, boss.
I would just want to say thank you, Tara.
Oh, that's nice, thank you. Anything, anything to help.
We appreciate it.
Alright, so next on the agenda is our unfinished business. Uh, the American Legion Boys State and Auxiliary Girls State Support Request. Interim manager, Ray.
So we had a request come before us in the April meeting. Um, and it is with the American Legion. They send two boys and two girls to their state and, um, this request, we just needed a little bit more, uh, information and they do have eight applicants. They are all from Tassel. They will be sending four, uh, two, two boys, two girls. They usually only get to send two, but, um, they have the funds for two and they're asking for the sponsorship for the other two. Um, sponsorship is $500 each.
Well, so, uh, we all know our budget outlook until we do budget amendments. A little later in the, in the meeting, so. Don't know if you guys want to hold until we do that, or?
They are town residents, that's the.
Um, it says eight are from Tassel.
Tassau, Tassau.
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 I do think it would probably be Tassau, I suppose.
Yeah, it would.
It's Tassau, I suppose.
Ladies and gentlemen, that's up to you and how you want to move forward.
I'd just like to see who else in the town.
For, for two students that, I mean, we don't know for certain that they are town residents and everything. Especially after we put it on, uh, push it out to another, I would like to see some representation to prove it, but, uh, to, you know, speak your case. I'm okay with table on this one, I think they'll get some funding.
Yeah, I think we've got to be careful. We tend to sponsor groups of people and this is almost becoming like an individual sponsorship that I think we would be very, need to be very careful going down that path.
Now, we ever give money?
Never.
One of them gave a donation, I wouldn't, it doesn't count.
It's a little.
So I prefer to, I don't know.
You want to table it?
Table it till next month and it's.
Go ahead and.
See who we got. It should show up.
Doesn't matter who it is.
To what?
Doesn't matter who it is.
It matters to me.
So, so I understand correctly, we're going to table this?
And we're going to be looking at budget stuff here in a few minutes. We're a bit open as it is.
We're over and. Okay, so I've got that marked as tabled, so Leanne, we can do some discussions on that. So next was the second reading and approval of the 2024, 2025 budgets. Turn it tight, it's got your name.
It's got my name for some reason, that's never happened.
I'll motion to waive the second reading.
Yeah, if I've been doing this, I've never been able to double budget. It's already, of course, you all had a public hearing in the first reading last month. And this will be the second reading. If you didn't have anyone come in and make any questions or inquiries about anything, so what you can do, you can waive a second reading for purposes and then vote. And then have to take effect, my recommendation is to take effect, of course, on July 1. Ordinarily, your ordinance is to take effect thirty days, this we want these to take effect. For continuity purposes, take, take place on July 1.
I'll say again. Let's wait for, somebody. Oh, okay. Okay, any discussion?
So if there's any discussion, does anyone on council have any comments, questions with regard to the budget that's read last month? Now, if not.
So you're on number two, too.
All right, so no discussion. All in favor of waiving the second reading, they said by say no? All opposed, they said by say no. All right, so the second reading is waived. Now we need to go into approving to take effect on one July 2024. So I'll entertain a motion for that.
I'll say.
Second. All right, any discussion? All in favor, someone about to say something.
Oh, yeah, I would like to make note that I am able to read on this because it does contain two or more entities that are staying in Tasewell today since I do have a conflict with Tasewell today. So I'm going to just make that note.
All right, so all in favor of approving the budget to take effect July 1st, 2024, stay so by say no? All opposed, stay so by say no. All right, so we have a budget moving forward. Next is the second reading for amendment to zoning ordinance for one or six Stratton Road to be rezoned from B two to M one. Turn it tight.
Had the first reading and the public hearing on this one also last month. As you may recall, this is the one parcel right on the county, town line, that's owned by the hospital for purposes of allowing them to go to an M one zone for purposes of having their own independent solar, not a farm or anything of that nature, but just solar capacity for the hospital. You can waive this, I can read it, this one's really short, but if you want to. I'll waive, make a motion, you're waived this.
Second.
Again, this is strictly foregoing from a general business B two designation to an industrial general M one. It doesn't affect any other classification, any other parcels in the area.
So any discussion? All right, all in favor of waiving the second reading, stay so by say no?
I would.
All opposed, stay so by say no.
I'll make a motion when you approve the resolution.
To take it back to thirty days?
Yes, July 4th, yeah.
Okay, I need a second.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor for approving the zoning ordinance change, take it back July 4th, 2024, stay so by say no?
I would.
All opposed, stay so by say no. All right, that is done. So next is a vote we need to ratify. The resolution of support for D H C D I R F grant application for Tasewell Centrum. We've done an online vote due to the urgency to get the work done. It was, I believe, Matt Regan unanimous?
It was.
I made the motion.
Councilmember Fox made the motion, councilmember Klein seconded unanimous vote to support. Now we just need to ratify it in a public session.
Correct.
So Brad, the process for approving something that we've already approved, how do you correctly?
You've had the same party, so you did the motion and second. Recommend they go through that same process, it's so good to have the public record.
I'll make the motion.
No.
Second it.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving resolution of support for D H C D I R F grant application for Tasewell Centrum, stay so by say no?
I would.
All opposed, stay so by say no. All right. And next we have a Friends of Juneteenth support request, interim manager, Ray.
I would like to make note that I'm stepping out of this conversation since I have a conflict.
Good evening, everyone.
Welcome back.
Thank you. I'm representing Juneteenth, and we're here to request or ask if you donate and help us out this year with our Juneteenth celebration. We've already started making up our, we've already done everything we need to do for you. Received the letters and the emails or whatever, and the ends instrumental in helping us out. Sorry for the short notice, but we had other people that were supposed to be on top of this, and then when we seen that it wasn't working, because I had stepped back, and we seen what it wasn't working, so we had to jump back in and try to make it work. And we have different areas coming in to this Juneteenth. Perrisburg, Bluefield, Virginia, Bluefield, West Virginia, McDowell County. All these folks are coming in, Land County are coming in to help represent Juneteenth. And you guys have a personal invitation to be a part of this also. And so we're asking for help with the expense. We have on Saturday, we have a prologue, and we have a guest speaker, and we have a choir. We have children that are doing their little skits, and we have poetry, and a lot of amazing things going on. And then we'll do like a freedom walk down through, down through the Main Street, down towards the car lot or Shakerade, as they call it. And then there, we will meet at the Head Start Center, where we will have food and festivities and fun. And Southwest is setting up their tent, and Bluefield State is coming up to set up their tent. And Virginia Tech will be there, the hospital will be there doing blood pressures and just things like that. So it's a whole community thing, and we're asking you guys to help us out with that part of it also. There will be food, and there will be music, we have a DJ there. There will be, we can't afford the fancy houses and anything this year because we're still like getting in. But we're going to try to go back to the old time things like water balloons and horseshoes and, and. What is it?
The cornhole.
The cornhole. I'm thinking of, so, and the cornholes and, and we just have different things. And painting, and we have artists there. Ellen and her husband are going to be there doing art, and the library will be there. So it's a lot of things going on in the community. And we're asking that the road be blocked off there. And we're also asking that the, because last year and the year before, the motorcycle was, we couldn't hear our program.
Right.
We don't know if it was done on purpose or not, but two years in a row is kind of.
It's very hard to tell.
Yeah, it was really, really hard to see that go on. So we're asking that we cut it off further down the road. And so we're asking for your help.
Well, you know, what we gave you last year was, I think it's three thousand, I think.
Right.
So I'm going to give three thousand again this year. Can we do that?
If you all vote.
Do you know how many votes attended last year?
I did do it last year, but several people did. In the past, it was for both days. It was like anywhere from three hundred to five hundred people here.
There's a lot of people. Good.
But last year.
Oh, seven, ten?
Oh, there's a lot of people.
So last year I was not here, so I'm not sure how many were. They did it at the fairground, too, and it was such a big place. And I think the community didn't do as well. But this year is packing, they're small, and so they pack in from all areas.
John, I love that. You said Bluefield State, Southwest, Virginia Tech are coming. Is that, is that new?
No, it's always been like, they always set up tents and try to encourage young people or anybody and give out their information, Cultural Community Action sets up the tent. You know, it's different one, but we wanted to encourage going to school. We want to encourage things going on in our community. We don't, we encourage health, you know, with the hospital coming down and doing blood pressure checks and different things like that.
Where you said you had to kind of pick up where things had left off. Have we, have you worked through everything and we're good with the street closure? Do they have the support that they need for that?
I mean, and it's been instrumental.
I also agree with what you're saying.
You say, am I right? Okay, I'll make the motion.
Appreciate it so much. And we hope that you guys will come and be a part of it and see what we do.
So any discussion? So all in favor of approving the donation request, three thousand dollars, stay so by say no?
I would.
All opposed, stay so by say no.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Oh, one other thing. We would be so honored if the mayor would be able to do our resolution.
Unfortunately, I'll be out of the country, and I've already talked to Vice Mayor Katrin, and he's going to. He's going to.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you. The next on the agenda. The next on the agenda is the request for proposals for engineering and architectural services. Another vote to ratify.
So you all have already given the approval for us to advertise. Our contract is running out with Thompson and Litten in July, so we need to get something in place for that. And that is what this is. Lynn made the motion, excuse me, Vice Mayor Katrin made the motion. Councilmember Davis made the second. It was unanimous support, and now we just need to ratify it in the public session.
I will make that motion again.
I will second.
Any discussion? All in favor for approving the request for proposals for engineering and architectural services, stay so by say no?
I would.
All opposed, stay so by say no. All right, motion carries. The next miscellaneous, did you have something you wanted to throw?
Um, right before we got ready to come into this meeting, I opened a newsletter that I received today. It is from Clinch Valley Community Action, and they are asking for air support to their Camp Joy Summer Camp 2024, free tuition. They are asking for a donation from the town in the amount of one thousand dollars. This amount will help cover tuition for ten kids to attend day camp for one week, free of cost, to parents and guardians. Camp Joy holds a camp for four weeks out of the summer, ages six to twelve and thirteen to seventeen. Their focus is on low-income, at-risk kids that no one has ever turned away regardless of anything. The day camp cost is a hundred dollars per child a week. Over the past three years, they have averaged five to six kids who reside in the town limits of Tasewell. And they are asking for support for Camp Joy.
Now you've got kids in town, right?
Five to six kids who resided in town.
Is that per week or is that total?
I think they're asking for a total donation.
No, I mean, is it five to six kids per week that go or total?
Over the past three years, we averaged five to six kids who resided in the town limits of Tasewell. That's all it said.
Did they say when the camp starts?
They did not. And I also looked to see if we had donated to this in the past. I could not find anything where we had donated, so this may be a new request. I did not find anything in previous years.
Well, I think we need, if it's five to six for the whole summer, that would be shocking. But if it's five to six a week, that might be a little, we could get some clarification on that.
So we want to table, and if camp starts sooner rather than later, we can do via email again?
Yeah.
Okay, so next, probably what a few people are here for. When our previous town manager left us there, we, we looked at several different ways to look for a new town manager and passed a few ideas around. Then we decided to open it up for people to send resumes in. And I think we had approximately fifty-nine applicants apply for, for this position. And it was kind of staggering how many we'd seen, we'd sent in and the interest in this. So we worked, whittled that down to a top five and started our interview process. And I'm happy to say, that was a pretty clear-cut choice, that Ms. Reagan's going to be able to drop that interim moniker, and she's going to be the new and first female town manager.
I really try to warn them.
Hold that layer.
So give us a little.
Come on. I've got this red card here to break.
As a matter of fact.
Okay, thanks.
Town manager.
Thank you, council.
I hate intern.
Say, miscellaneous?
I would like to say a huge thank you to all of you for putting your trust in me or letting me have the opportunity to do it as an intro. I mean, I've learned a lot, and I think there's one thing that we can all say in this room, and I've learned it in its top forefront, nothing moves faster than local government. That's the key number one. And to these over here, I couldn't have done this without Susan. So Susan, thank you so much. And Brad has been a phone call away, a text away, so very good with Brad and everything that he's helped us do lately. And our department heads, I appreciate you guys and everything you've helped me do. And to the first row up to here, thank you all for my support. And I'm excited, I'm ready to do this, we've got a lot of work to do. So thank you all for letting me have this opportunity.
Absolutely.
Leanne, I was going to say, you don't talk, you don't just cry. Leanne, you know, when you first took the intern as a town manager, you did a fantastic job. You had everything on the spot, and I appreciate as a councilman that you'll be the good one. Fantastic one, probably.
Thank you.
And first female in Tasewell, town Tasewell history.
So we just made history.
We did.
Yes. So she's the first female history to be our town manager, and she's doing a heck of a good job. She knows how to talk to people, she knows how to work with men around.
I will try to always do what's best for the town, what's best for our citizens, their council employees. I will always try to keep that first.
Well, I'm like a double national.
I appreciate it.
Well, how about next, the, I'm the.
Just scratch out the interim.
Yeah, that's, I was going to say, it's first quarter business, it's the official town manager. Can we have an update on the waterline project?
So we were actually supposed to have a bid opening last Wednesday, and Thompson and Litten had to move it to tomorrow. So tomorrow, two o'clock in this room, we will have a bid opening for the 460 Waterline Project, and we're going to get it off the ground, pun intended.
Looking forward to that when Dottie's ready to jump in.
These rooms.
So, uh, next, uh, we have the Taz County Chamber of Commerce, Bishop Cole.
I wanted to come and say thank you. I'm sure everyone knows that I have submitted my resignation from the Taz County Chamber of Commerce. But I wanted to thank you for your support and I hope that you all will continue to support the chamber. I will still be on the Ruffus Committee, um, so I'm gonna finish that out. Um, we have a golf tournament coming up. I'm gonna do that. I have some educational programs that I've put in place and some business networking, um, that is already scheduled. So definitely see what's in store for the chamber. I'm sure they will find someone, um, that is ready and willing to go to another level. So, in saying thank you, the chamber wanted to donate pictures at the time as well to you all. Since we are a county chamber, we no longer hang these. Um, I do have picture for cattle, I have picture for the whole county, but these are really some things that I found. So, yeah. So thank you all.
Thank you.
I gotta go back.
Thanks again. Thanks for everything you did with it. So we just announced her as official town manager now after these budget amendments.
We're on the history here. Okay, so I, I put my treasurer hat on for this woman. Um, so I find that it's really important, especially right now, to know where we are in our budget. And, I mean, we have budget, of course, we could look at, we could see, however, it would be such a better clear picture if everything was in line and neat and tidy. So, um, I have got it almost. I, I did not get to finish every single thing, but like 97% of our budget is back in balance in the general fund. We did water sewer, IDA at the last meeting, so they're good. Um, there's some pretty big numbers if you had looked through here. And, um, some of this we knew going into this budget could possibly be an issue and some, um, specifically, there's some in the police department and some in area EMS that we are going to look into the numbers a little bit more and get some detail to find out why those are out of balance like they are. But for the purpose of these amendments, everything is back in balance. We're good to go. And if you all have any questions, I'm ready.
I wonder what I'm squashing adding off of it. Do you have that?
We're waiting, I guess, Thompson and Litten to do a KAR at the end.
Uh, so we've had our first meeting, like a kickoff meeting with rural development. They are the, so we received funds from a congressional, um, directed spending grant that will allow us to improve our current rescue squad structure and, um, try to make things up there a little better than what they are right now. Um, council has also directed some funds toward this project. However, we, we've not done anything yet with it. There, we've, we've found a hiccup that we're gonna have to address. And it has to do with the deed of the property. So Brad and I have actually been on the phone today. And we're gonna have to get through some processes and what was my number one? It was thinking local government moves fast. So that's kind of on hold until we get the deed cleared.
So we, we received a federal?
No.
Grant, we have?
Have not. Uh, but Thompson and Litten was going to start trying to put something together for us. That way we have an idea of what we could do.
So is the math there looking at working with the federal money and what council?
We made major group?
Yes. No, I would like you to do one by one. Yeah, she couldn't do that so great.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve the budget amendments in front of.
I'll second.
Discussion? On, with, with us, like we had spoken earlier today and perhaps for our planning purposes, as we've discussed with, you know, like the Boise State and, and some other, um, community development funding, do we, is appropriate or slash do we, do we have an estimate on the amount of budget slack that we would have for the remaining portion of the year?
For some of the end of next month?
Yeah.
This is next month?
In a, in a super conservative estimate is?
Okay, so we just, um, we just did the 460 team. So, we have $957.36. For the rest of the budget. Now let's take that money off the donation.
Is there enough, is there a portion of that that could be reallocated towards either capital improvement? Or is that all necessary in order to ensure that the government remains operational for the remainder of the year?
Now say it again.
Is there a portion of that that can be reallocated for anything capital inclusion?
A portion of what?
Of that, there's.
$957.
You said $957. I'm sorry, I misheard that. $957.
We can, we can.
So, any more discussion? Alright, so I've got a second. Just, uh, need, I need a vote to approve the motion to approve the budget amendments. So, uh, all in favor of approving, speak up by saying aye. All opposed, speak up by saying nay. Alright, so, those are approved. Uh, next, it is our miscellaneous public comment. John, if anyone might sign in?
No, sir.
Anyone might sign in?
You're in the gym, you're in the stadium.
I bet I know this.
I bet you do too.
Yes. You can state, state your name and address.
I don't live in town, does that matter?
Doesn't matter.
I'm David Strapsky, I live at 232 Wood Lane and I am very uncomfortable being in front of you guys. Uh, we want to bring back adult softball league. Something we need from the town is the field to fix. They're in very poor condition. And from all the research I've done from the past leagues, that's why they quit. They couldn't get enough support to keep the fields moving and in playable condition. We've got multiple team interests. We've got plans to bring business into town. There'll be at least a hundred players at a time there. That's food bought in the town. Unfortunately, it's alcohol bought in the town, but it's still money spent in our community.
It tanks that too.
Exactly. Most of these players have kids. That's kids spending money. It's your park. If the fields were upgraded and done right, you could host youth travel ball tournaments, which is a huge thing right now. There is communities around us that are making killer money off of the youth travel. So if done right and done well, the town could benefit from it, we could benefit from it. We got a safe place to play. The Little League's a nice place, but it's not big enough for adults. We can get on there and hit Harrah's Building all day. I play with guys that do it daily. So we need a more suitable adult environment.
Are you looking to fix the upper field too?
Both fields.
It's got a drainage issue.
Yeah, both fields have drainage issues. Both fields are hard to rock. Uh, you trip up over gravel constantly. So both fields need to be updated and used.
I talked to the rec director today. He said the upper field has got a lot of work to do on it.
It does.
Now the lower field, uh, the water goes out into the.
Park and lot. And if you was to resurface that field today without doing anything else, in two weeks, you're investment would be in the parking lot.
Yeah.
And that's not what we're looking to do. It's not what we're looking to do.
He's going to want to do drains, uh, on the upper field. There's a drain up there. And we talked about this several years back, uh, today. We've got to get that water going, that drain come on down, down to the side to the rug. There was a big drain, uh, on the other field. It's on the outside, that's why.
Well, if, yeah, if you come out of the fence line by the field house, there's a huge drain, you can tie the upper field in there.
That's what I'm.
The lower field will take a little more work.
What I'm trying to do there.
I think the day camp test is, I used to play 20, 25 years ago and you couldn't find a place to park.
Yeah, okay. And see, if we could bring that back, that's business back in our community.
I want to see it come back.
Well, what they're just trying to say is, so in high school, our programs have been well with baseball and girls softball. Last four years, you've got a lot of kids that's graduated and they don't have an outlet. I hadn't played in 20 years. And my young son asked me to play coed softball because these kids are close. And coed softball's a little different now. They quit using that.
Somewhat irregular softball.
Somewhat. So you had like four girls on a team and six guys. So it would give our kids an outlet because they're taxpaying citizens too. You know, give them something to do. And you would draw teams from Richland, it's home acre in Woodville, in West Virginia. And I know you can't have like a big league, but you could have a constrictive league. And even if you had something at the Little League field this year, this is showing you care.
You see, I don't care about something. I love softball. I'd like to see it grow here. And you're doing a good job bringing it to us. Now, when it comes to alcohol, we don't want that on the field.
And, but that's.
That's not what we're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, he wasn't saying.
That's.
That's, that's after.
Of a tournament. I think if you had a league, you're not gonna have that because you are gonna have your kids there.
We're not encouraging.
Kids seeing that.
Yeah, we're not encouraging alcohol, but they're also adults. You can't non-stop. You know, I can't go in there and be like, they're grown men and women.
But they can't come to that game.
And I understand that and that's not what we're telling you.
But what we're here to ask is, you have a recreation department, you have a recreation director.
Yes.
You're here to implement programs, you know, do something for your taxpaying citizens.
These kids are working on that. Uh, I pray, uh, thanks for today.
Could we get the name of the company we used to redo the Little League field?
I think we can.
Yeah, they just play.
Both fields are regaining.
Yeah.
I, I would prefer.
Do you need this back?
That's for you guys. I would personally prefer to look at, do, doing a overall re, just a bigger job in servicing Lincolnshire and possibly making a makeshift league this year. I, I wouldn't, I don't want to rush into fixing Lincolnshire so that we can do a tournament this year or something like that.
I think Dave, when David might talk.
Yeah, that's, that was not the plan. We just want to get the ball rolling. If it's not from you, nothing can happen. Right. No, I, and I appreciate that. I just want to make sure, you know, with the way that field's used, we want to make sure to do it right.
And you want to do them both at the same time.
Yeah, it'd be cheaper.
It's very difficult to start with a different screen. It's all the whole, it's all the same problem.
Exactly what I'm talking about, the drain.
If we can get three more men out there to work that field on the upper end and get some kind of, uh, dry, uh, it's supposed to, some kind of chemical that quick drive.
That's turfis.
Yes, turfis. Is there any way you can help about getting this field on the upper field? Now, the lower field's good, but it's going out the rug. It's still, it's.
You can spend an insane amount of money on turfis quick though. It's not a cheap investment and it's a temporary investment. What Joe's presented is better. Take your time, invest your money, do it right.
That's what he's going to do.
Let us have, let us have a, a small season this year at the Little League. And our division and, and you as the council together, get the ball rolling at the park. For 2025 season to be full on at Lincolnshire Park.
I would love to see it.
How that's going to be great.
When would it immediately start?
We're, we're pitching a coed league for this year.
For next year? What kind of timeframe? Just start immediately?
Uh, what we was wanting to do was coexistence soccer. So soccer would end on this weekend and the next weekend we start. And then the weekend before fall soccer starts, starts back, we stop. That way, there's nothing to it from the kids. We all get the share. Everyone gets a piece.
Did you come up with something about a kickball thing coming up this weekend?
Um, there is a kickball tournament this weekend.
Yeah.
See, that's your field's being used now, but look at the condition they are.
I know that's, he's got, we gotta get something out there. Uh, maybe in the fall or spring, we have to dig that place up.
So for this summer, you're still playing down using the.
That's what we're suggesting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Have you contacted anyone to see if they have the time that allotted for you guys to do that?
They're currently in All-Stars now. And once their All-Star season is over, they're gonna sit down with a few people that I've been talking with and try to arrange some dates. And then hopefully we can get the ball rolling. But the long-term plan is for adults to be at Lincolnshire where we can be adults. Where we can, you can set the outfield for an adult size and you can get the ball. Currently, what we do at the Little League field, we restrict home runs for men. Men hit a very squishy ball. We're gonna continue the squishy ball of COVID. That's for women's safety. But if we had a larger outfield for adults, home runs can be unlimited. And then you would draw more players. A lot of players don't want to come and just hit one homerun a game.
If that field, if there's conflicts and we need an alternative location, is there anything that would, in the current field conditions, that would prevent you guys from utilizing Lincolnshire or this summer?
You could play on the, the parking lot field, but the upper field is gonna need a lot of care. Every time it rains, it's a mud hole. It's shaped like a bowl.
Right.
Yeah. If we could do something to fix that field to make it playable this year. But then again, you're putting money in a temporary investment. You'd be better off to just do it right one time.
That's, you're right on that.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna take this leap and spend this amount of money, you'd be better off to do it one time. But you could, like we, we discussed once before, you could do some kind of fixing the field and make it usable this year. You're gonna have to anyways for this kickball tournament this coming weekend. We gotta do something to make it playable. And we've got rain in the forecast the next two days. That's gonna really hinder that. Last year, we had adult farmers out there and we were taking something, almost sucking down mud holes to make it usable.
I, I don't think there's any objection to utilizing Little League. I think you're already working with the Little League organization.
Yeah, I've got, I've got friends that are talking with them, so we can make that happen for this year. But the, the long-term goal of what we're asking for is to make Lincolnshire usable. And it will benefit everyone, us, you guys, the community. Like me and Danny were saying, you've got interest from multiple towns to come here. This would be the central softball hub to bring in money for our community.
We have, uh, three areas in town softball tournaments. Out here at the, uh, high school that we used to play, but, you know, but I don't know if you can play there or not.
No, sir.
Uh, out there at, uh, now the fairground, two, two softball areas play. And they do the tournaments because of Lincolnshire, uh, the fairgrounds there. We did it out there at the CLA in the back. Had a softball area. So what, is there anything out there at the, uh, leadership, uh, out, uh, behind the middle school, not, not Lou Peary Field, the other camp? not Lou Peary's field, is there, the other field?
Uh, there's an upper field, both of those fields were strictly for baseball. Make a suggestion, I support what you're asking for, unless you understand that. I support adult softball and co-ed across the board, but I also support kids in a very special way.
Yes.
And a thousand years ago, I used to play adult softball too. And what happens, if you have a tournament and it rains, you continue to play. It doesn't make any difference, somebody slows down, you've got something, another team's going to play, thirty minutes or an hour later, so you get your game in. And what happens to your fields is they get torn all to pieces. Then your Little League, we showed up on Monday, they were practicing, and you've got four or five kids hitting the tee from a ground ball, that's what you end up with. So I'm not saying don't support his, his motion here, I, I very much support that. What I'm saying is, we need a lot more fields, and we need fields that are designated just strictly for adult.
That's what I'm pitching.
But we also need to protect those little guys.
Yes.
Because they can't defend themselves.
Like, that's kids, it's going to, it's going to be kids growing up, being involved players. But like, somehow, I'm all for softball, because I play, I play every league as well.
Hey, Mayor, I got a motion. Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we allow our town manager to work with their rec director to start, receiving some quotes on completely revitalizing the Lincolnshire Park softball complex.
I'll second. Could I add something to that? And then also explore recreational grants that might be available for something like this.
Okay, any discussion?
Just, just on that comment, I think we utilize those builds for another event maybe related to OTR last year, and I think that the builds will roll afterwards.
We roll them once a month.
Once a month?
Yeah.
So in, in consideration for the kids, you know, rolling the builds?
Yeah, we do our best, I encourage the Little League, we do our best to make those fields as best as they can for the youth.
Yeah.
So that wouldn't be an issue, because we do our best to take care of, and a lot of volunteers spend a lot of time to make it the best it can be for the kids. But that's not what I'm sitting here telling you, I'm telling you that that's theirs we want out of.
Yeah, part of that.
So got a second on allowing Leanne to work with their rec director, get some quotes, see what it would take to refurbish Lincolnshire fields, make them playable for adult softball. And look for grant opportunities to help, help make that a reality. So all in favor, say so, I say aye. All opposed, say so, I say nay.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, thank you. I'll let a candidate motion to adjourn. So move. Second? Any discussion? All right. All favor of, all of this. All favor of. I've got a motion, a second. Yep, all favor, can you say so, I say aye?